Welcome to our regular first scheduled meeting of July. It is July 2nd, 2013, and it is 6:03 PM. I do call this meeting to order, and we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I make a motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have Sandy read the open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland. Scott Perchazski.
Here.
Steve Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, you have consent agenda items on here. Are there any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? You can see that there is one ordinance on there, and that had to do with the comprehensive plan change on School Street. That was a unanimous vote at City Planning, and that's why that is on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under the regular agenda, Sandy, you've put some things on our desk tonight.
Under number seven, action items, letter A, Judiciary Committee. Item number three, City of Wapaka Meeting Comparisons was distributed. And under number nine, unfinished business, item number two, counter offer number one was distributed. That's all.
Okay, so we really don't have any changes to the agenda, just some additional items that were handed out. Henry, did you put that on everybody's desk too? Henry did put the fiscal 2014 budget calendar on your desk also, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later. That was another item that you'll see. We would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shamble, second by Lockwood, that we approve the agenda with those three additions. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, next then, under action items, we have Judiciary Committee, and we have a request from Menzles Club 22 to expand their premise description for three events that they have. July 20th is their Mara Stangie Memorial Ride. August 17th is the Second Annual Car Show, and then September 21st is their Second Annual Crystal, Menzle is in the audience here if we have any questions. Chief, you've had a chance to take a look at these.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns.
Okay. There is a map in your packet too, if you've, I'm sure you've all seen that too, lays out how they're going to do it. Crystal, anything you want to add?
No, it's the same as last year.
Okay.
No, we have no issues.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the request by Menzles Club 22 to expand their premise descriptions on July 20th, 2013, August 17th, 2013, and September 21st, 2013.
Second.
You heard the motion by Lockwood, second by Shamble. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good luck on all three, Crystal. License report number 1179, this is a special Class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages and wine for the Wapaka Community Arts Board, Arts on the Square, which is August 16th, 2013. We do have Anita and...
Marcy.
Marcy, I'm sorry. Had a brain pause there. Sorry about that. In the audience too, anything you would like to say, either one of you? Okay, Chief?
My only concern is that they, it's not a confined enclosed area, it's wide open. Usually typically have fences, have it closed off. I don't see you got anything on the application that it's closed off, it's just on the street.
Can you address that, Marcy?
We have a very large tent, and typically we put a fence around the tent with two entrances.
I thought that'd be a requirement of this license then, because it's not on the application.
Were we supposed to write that on there? I'm sorry.
So your plan though is to have a fence around that?
Yeah, we've done this.
In future, if you would just tell us that you're going to have that fence around there, so that would help us.
Sure.
Okay.
Marcy, one thing I noticed on your application too, in here it says beer and wine, but you only have beer checked on your application.
Right, we're only applying for beer.
Okay, alright.
Alright, anything else? Anybody? If not, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve license report number 1179 with the language about the fencing.
Second.
We have a motion by Shamble, second by Lockwood, that we approve license report number 1179. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Marcy, we're going to read that, and Anita, we're going to read that proclamation at the next meeting.
Okay.
I didn't have time to get it on the agenda, but we'll have that at the next meeting.
Thanks a lot.
Yep. Okay, let's move on then to, this is the first reading of ordinance number 0713, 2013. This is an ordinance amending municipal code of the city of Wapaka, section 201, parent 1, meetings, sections 202, parent 2, quorum in attendance, and section 203, order of business. And if you look on, help me out, what page is that on?
16.
Page 16, thank you. Now this is to start the process of changing the next, both these ordinances, the next one too, is to start the change to the committee level meetings, the big four, as I call them, the judiciary, finance, public works, and personnel, then would become part of the, having the two city council meetings per month, instead of having the four committees plus one council meeting. Henry had Josh, although in, there was a handout that's on your desk, and I'll let Henry talk about it a little bit to explain it, or if Josh is available, but although I think it's important that we understand that the reason that we went from the committee level to the two council meetings had nothing to do with saving time, that we would be at our job for a less period of time, this does compare some time there. Henry, you want to touch on this?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, we'd gotten some comments that there was some concerns about the new format adding time. So we had some fairly easy data to capture. Josh has the, you know, tapes from all these meetings, so he just went back and cataloged it. And you can see, we have the regular city council meeting, and then special councils, and for a 10-second special council, or 10-minute, my thinking that might be a public hearing, but I didn't confirm that with him. But there is, if you look in February, two and a half hour meeting there. But then you have your standing committees, and in some months, like personnel, there was a couple months that they didn't meet, and public works, a couple months. But then you can see total meeting time, and then on the very far right column, Josh made some assumptions, you know, here he's got it, this column averages the time two of the four committee meetings take, since each council member attends all council meetings in two committees. So, and now you can go to the bottom, and you can see our city council meeting times. Now, you know, as you remember, in May, we had two long presentations in that regular council meeting, so it extended it out. But if you go to the far right column and you average it out, you know, it runs a gamut of, a low of what, an hour 49 minutes in the month of July, to as high as, was it, 3:58 in February. And I can't know for certain why, you know, things are, you know, fluctuate that much, but my guess is right after the budgets pass, I know staff works real diligently to bring their budget projects forward and things of that nature, maybe that's why these winter months are a little bit longer. But certainly, you know, one individual meeting the last couple times has, you know, kind of been in the average. I don't...
Okay.
Josh is not here if you had specific questions of the date, I'm sorry, he's not here, but...
Okay, like I said, these 07 and 08 are both changing the format, or changing our ordinance to meet this. This is the first reading. There will be a second, the second reading which we'll vote on. I'm assuming this will not be under consent agenda, because this is originated at the council level, so it hasn't been, so it'll just be under the regular agenda at that time. We do have the ability right now to discuss this if you'd like to.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, committee heads, they do do some things, like they funnel agenda items into the agenda. Sometimes in emergencies, they can be contacted to make decisions. They, you know, there's some things that committee heads do, so if we're not going to have committee heads, who's going to be, who's going to be doing those things?
I will be. I mean, we, we're going, if we go from this direction of four committees to a council meeting, two council meetings, then all of those main four committees will just come directly to council, so I'm assuming that I would be then, as you would look at it, as the chairman of those, because I am the chairman of the council meeting. So if John wanted to come forward with items that he would like to see on the agenda, he would come to me.
Or if any of the other aldermen wanted to add an item to, say, the judiciary or Board of Public Works, they'd have to go through you?
Yes. Yes. You got another question?
Mayor, is the meeting time still open to debate? I'd like to suggest that we poll the council to see how many prefer, say, 6 o'clock versus 6:30. The committee meeting started at 5:15, and my preference when we started this was to meet at 5:30. There were those that wanted 6:30, and I thought 6 was a good compromise.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it got back to 6:30 on here, but I think that's open.
I agree with Paul, I wish it was at 5:15, because it seems like the two meetings aren't saving time, and you have two nights where you don't get home till way late, and if they were at 5:30 or even, then maybe that wouldn't be the case. I mean, I'm not so sure. I thought I would like this format better, but I'm not so sure that I do. I think maybe I don't.
I agree with Dave, I do not like this format as well.
Because?
Because I think it's more time, even regardless of... I just think that...
I thought I would like it.
Two meetings, when they last five hours, I think that's...
Well, that's one.
I know, but I just say I don't like it as well.
I think it's more efficient, I mean, for example, Menzles Club 22, I mean, we wouldn't have been able to make that decision tonight if we all wouldn't have been here. It's done, we've talked about it, we move on. If it was just judiciary, we'd talk about judiciary, and we'd bring it to council, council would then talk about it, possibly. I think it's just a more efficient format, not necessarily time consuming, you know, less time, but more efficient for our citizens.
I agree. Excuse me, I didn't know if I would like it either, but I do. And the reason being is that we all hear the same thing at the same time, and we all make the decision at the same time. I think it's more efficient, and I think it is time-saving. I have to go along with what Josh put here, I have to assume he's looking at tape length and programming, but that's my opinion, I like it.
As far as the time goes, I'm fine with whatever. 5:30, I'd be okay with.
Oh yeah, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me about time either.
How do we decide on time?
As far as time goes, you know, for myself, I can barely get here for 5:15, going like a madman from work at 5 o'clock leaving. That leaves absolutely no time to go from work to have any time in between work and getting here to do anything. So it makes for an awful long day to have zero break between work and a 5:15 meeting. If it's a committee, that's a different story, because it doesn't last too long, but if it's a council meeting, then it's, you know, it can last two, three, four hours.
It's kind of funny, I'm the opposite, where I'd rather go to work, come here and be done with everything, and then go home.
I agree.
I'd rather do that, and I understand what you're saying. I'm the opposite.
Yep, Paul, we all do the same thing, you know, work all day, and then typically, I'm not suggesting 5:15, okay?
Six o'clock works fine, I mean, that's at least enough time to get home, grab a quick bite to eat, and, you know, and pet the dogs and get here.
I mean, this is just the first reading, so we can change this. Have it posted that way. I'm hearing 5:30 or 6, I think are the two numbers I'm hearing.
My personal preference is the earlier the better.
I'd also be, I would say no earlier than 6. For some of us, like Paul said, now I have to go home and change clothes, I can't, I don't wear a suit and tie and real good clothes, and I'd like some time to go home, you know, after 5, at least, you know, but that's, everybody's different here, so...
Okay. 5:30, raise your hand.
Doesn't matter to me.
Two, three. Four. Four, okay.
Can I just say I don't care? Do I have to vote? It really doesn't matter.
I'm staying.
Well, let's see what happens. 6 o'clock, raise your hand.
I'd vote.
One, two, three, four, five, let's do 6 o'clock.
It doesn't matter to me, it really doesn't.
6 o'clock. Let's, we can always change it to a later date if we find that it's...
Fair enough.
You know, the one thing that, I was thinking about this too, as we were talking about it, if we have our council meeting at 6 o'clock, there are a number of times where we have things that happen before the council meeting. So there'll be a lot of times where we're probably going to be starting at 5:30 or 5:45 anyways to get...
Public hearings.
Public hearings out of the way. So I think if we go at 5:30, that might, if people have to work till 5, that might be a little bit too early to do that. Okay. So again, we'll vote on this at, no action tonight, but we'll vote on this at our July 16th meeting.
Mayor, this is 6 o'clock for both meetings.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Although the next meeting's at 6:30. Next, John.
Yes.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Until this is adopted, it would be 6:30.
Okay, so the 16th meeting is at 6:30 to vote on whether we're going to go to 6 o'clock.
Stop talking.
How am I doing now?
Stop.
All right. Let's, okay, the next one is ordinance number 0813. This is an ordinance repealing the municipal code when it has to do with committees and functions. And basically, what this does is get rid of the big four committees and just, they're all encompassed by the council. And again, we'll vote on this at the July 16th meeting, as that will be the second reading of it. Anything else on those two ordinances?
Just to comment on that second one, none of these committees are statutory, they're just, you can have them or not. There are a whole lot of other commissions, library boards, different other things, almost every one of the other things, planning commissions, board review, those are all required by statute, almost all. There are a couple that aren't necessarily required, but these are ones that aren't even mentioned in the statutes, they're just discretionary at the council, so just so they understand that the other ones are required, and you couldn't do away with those if you wanted to.
Good.
Yep.
Alright, thanks. And I think that's, yeah. Okay, let's move on then to number five, which is a request for street closures for the Wapaka area triathlon, which is on August 16th and 17th. You have, you see those in your packet, no different than they have been years past, although last year might have been a little different with the Main Street project going on, but this is back to normal here. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the request for street closures for the triathlon on August 17th and 16th.
Second.
We have a motion by Shamble, second by Olson, that we approve of the request from the Wapaka area triathlon for street closures on August 16th and 17th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Moving on to Board of Public Works, we, John, go ahead.
Okay, we've got a few items here tonight. The first item is request for proposals for engineering services for Hillcrest Drive pavement reconstruction in West Fulton. As a department, we have put together, what we're proposing are the next two roads to be worked on for next year, and we will put out a request for proposals. I did give you just a portion of that in your packets on item page 20. But we would, we don't necessarily need authorization for requests for the proposals to submit that, but obviously, these are the two roads that we're recommending for work next year. We have not put the budget together, because we haven't designed the projects, but we're thinking these two, we're hoping will fit into next year's budget, whatever we authorize, so we're always a year ahead on design. So this would have gone typically to the Board of Public Works for review for, you know, next year's program, so it's going to council tonight because of the lack of the board. So, again, Hillcrest Drive, we're looking at Harrison Street to short of Fulton, which is the new pavement behind Hardee's. I don't have, well, I guess it's on here. Do you have a map? I believe it's 1,700 feet long, if I'm correct. 1,300 feet. 1,300 feet. We would be looking at curb and gutter addition in areas that either are deteriorated, or there's lacking curb and gutter. Pavement reconstruction, some minimal stormwater management, that we may perform some of that work ourselves. And if you've driven that pavement, it's in pretty rough shape. The pavement width varies 30 to 45 feet wide through there. And then West Fulton Street, this is the concrete pavement section in front of what we traditionally call in front of Kmart. We are looking at a pavement repair of those joints that had deteriorated, and then an overlay, asphalt overlay, much like we did on the hill on Fulton Street, going up the hill. We used a different type of asphalt mix, that really seemed to work pretty well, is holding up pretty well. That is what we're looking for proposals, we'll probably solicit five or six engineering firms get proposals and bring that back to the council for consideration. And we would be looking for a fall design of that survey and design, and we would be hopefully out to bid, I'm thinking maybe February, February or March of next winter. And by then, we'll know what's been budgeted for capital. If either of these projects don't fit into our capital program, the project will be held a year, and we would go the next year. And that's been done, we did it on Bailey Street for a few years, so, but we, again, are requesting to proceed with these two roadways at this time. And Mayor, I think we would need, I think it would be good if, to take comment or questions, and then I would ask for action tonight, so that we document that these roads are acceptable for design.
So we're, you're asking to be able to go out to get bids?
Correct.
Okay. And you'd like to have us...
Well, I think we're acknowledging that these are the two roads that we are going to proceed with design on for consideration for next year's construction.
Okay. Everybody understand?
He's asking just for design, not for bids.
Well, engineering bids. Right.
Right, this would be, I'll go out and get engineering proposals and bring them back for consideration, but short of designing any other roads, these are the only two we can build next year, one or both.
I make a motion, we approve it, so that he can go out and get bids.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Hackett, second by Fenske, that we allow John Edelbeck, Director of Public Works, to request proposals for engineering service for Hillcrest Drive and the West Fulton Street pavement overlay project. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, did I not look up?
John, is that gonna, that'll be paid out of 14's budget, then, if you get bids and the design payment?
Design would be out of this year.
It would be out of this year.
It would be funding out of 13, yes.
Okay.
I don't expect...
Do we have that in a budget somewhere?
We have, we have capital in our road program right now, that will come out of that. Okay. I don't expect it to be a large contract amount, but we'll see how the proposals come in.
John, will any of that be paid by the state, or could it?
No, we get monies, it's called a connecting highway, we actually get monies from the state to do minor maintenance, and we would not be able to, I've talked to the state about that, we would not be able to get monies for that.
Okay.
We were able to get some last time on the hill, but that was a special circumstance, and that won't apply here.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Okay, and then on page 23 and 24, we have, we could take these separate, but this is the quick claim deed. The first one is from the city to Wapaka County, and this is for the jurisdictional transfer of County Highway K. And what this is doing is we're quitclaim deed in the right-of-way from the city to the county for a portion of Royalton Street and Tower Road. So that's now is what we call County Highway K, which used to be City Road right-of-way, Tower Road, and then Royalton east of Tower Road. And the second quitclaim deed is from the county to the city, and that's giving us the old sections of County Highway K, which would be Lakeside Parkway, South Main, Badger, East Fulton, O'Bourn, and Ware. So those were the roads that we've made improvements on over the last few years, that's the jurisdictional transfer, and this is the legal document that transfers those public rightaways. And I guess Mayor had asked for action on both of those tonight, one we're signature to, the first quitclaim deed. I did send this over to Attorney Hart for review, and he's, he was in support of those documents.
So you want to take care of both of them?
I think we'd like, I'd like action on both, either one vote or separate, doesn't matter.
Okay, I think we can do them both together, right?
I would move to approve the quitclaim deed from the city of Wapaka to Wapaka County, and also the quitclaim deed from Wapaka County to the city of Wapaka for County Highway K, jurisdictional transfer.
Motion by Hagan, second by Hackett. You heard the motion, any discussion?
Do you actually exchange the dollar? Do you actually have checks for a dollar that... Yeah, I don't know, I'll talk to our city attorney about that.
Any other discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
And Scott Pritchettzky?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
The last item, Mayor, for consideration is amendment number one to the wastewater treatment plant anaerobic digester cover rehabilitation project. In the original engineering services, we did not include construction engineering services. We just looked at design, design engineering services and permitting and that type of thing. At this point now, we're looking for construction engineering services and that's actually shown on page 26 as a summary of those services. I'm sorry, 27. Deals with administering the pay request, conducting pre-construction meeting with the contractor, review any submittals. There are shop drawings that are submitted and reviewed, any change orders. There'll be as-built plans generated from this by the engineering firm. And then observation inspection. Some of these items, we anticipate our staff will be able to perform. And this contract is an, is a hourly not to exceed. Depending on if we have staff on vacation or what's going on at the time, we will, we will be performing some of these duties, so they will not be billing us for that. But at this time, I don't know exactly what that will be. So, we need action on this tonight. This is about a $400,000 project. We had budgeted $550,000 total. So, we'll be in about the $400,000 range by the time we're done. So, there's obviously budget monies. But as I stated, we would not anticipate spending this full contract amount.
So, we're talking a number not to exceed that 27,000?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Discuss it first, motion?
I would move that we approve amendment number one to the wastewater treatment plant anaerobic digester cover rehabilitation project.
Second.
Yeah, let's, let's put in there the amount too.
In an amount not to exceed $27,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that the council approves of the amendment number one to the wastewater treatment plant anaerobic digester cover rehabilitation project, Robert E. Lee and Associates for an amount not to exceed $27,000. Any discussion?
John, is this, Robert E. Lee is the main contractor for this?
Well, they're the design engineer, design and permitting engineer for this and-
So, would we normally bid out this, this contract, or no?
We took proposals on the design engineering and permitting because it's a pretty set standard aspect. And once it's designed, then we have a better feel for what type of construction inspection. It would, it would have been a little more difficult to try to get these numbers before we designed it. That makes sense?
What I'm asking is do, would we, would we bid out the construction engineering services contract? Or does it have to be with-
I would, I would recommend not doing that to a different firm. I would recommend that we contract with the firm that designed it. I wouldn't suggest we have a different firm come in now and do construction inspection services.
And why is that?
Well, the, the firm that designed it is inherently familiar with the design itself. You know, it's their same people. People that actually did design work will be doing inspection work. So, they're very familiar with the project. I wouldn't suggest we bring in another, a separate firm. I don't think that's worth our, I think there's some, going to be some time for that new firm to get up to speed even to understand what the project is. They didn't design it.
I was just concerned about a $27,000 contract not being bid out, that's all. But if you feel that it's, it's a-
Yeah. And like I said, I think we're going to be performing a portion, a good portion of this work. I don't know about half, but we have pretty capable employees. It's just, the hard part for me to tell you now is if we have people on vacation, you know, we may not have the staff available to do that. But our employees, we're actually, we actually took on a portion of this project. We're building a portion of this project, our own staff was taken out of the design, out of the construction contract. So, we're installing the pump and different things on this, so we're going to be pretty involved in it. So, this dollar amount will be substantially less than 27.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchettzky?
Aye.
And Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Okay, new business, nothing tonight, unfinished business. We have the update on the South Park project and I'm going to have Henry just explain a few things here to you.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, you got your first peek of, at the project. The, the city staff team that was involved and that was myself and in John and Aaron and Roger Hansen and then Russ Montgomery. And in the last month with some of Brennan's skillset, he's been kind of pulled in. Now, you know, I think this is all part of the project development, okay? You got your staff, we had concepts, so we addressed some of the short, some of the shortcomings in the park through the design. We came up with a proposed design while it's not in budget. So, there's a need to go back to the drawing board, if you will. And I think essentially, we're looking at two ways to get it in budget. And for round numbers, the budget is 700,000 to cover all the cost. Not only the cost of the building, but site work, you know, benches, furniture fixtures, playgrounds in there with that 700. I think we've got a budget of 80,000 for the playground. So, there's really two approaches and we have met with Carter, with MSA today on it. But basically, taking the design as it is and looking at maybe different materials, shrinking it up slightly, maybe eliminating some of the limits of the construction to try to get the budget down. That's going to be one exercise. And then the other one is to essentially redesign it, I think is probably the correct term. It would still have two wings, but maybe get away from the angle because that whole configuration is, I think, as stunning as it's going to be for the people in it and looking over the lake and the views and the building itself. That creates a lot of issues with, you know, making that work with the angles and the roof systems, you know, wild swings on a potential cost. And there's four or five vendors that they reached out to, a low of 140,000 up to 210,000 or 215,000 just to construct the roof. So, there's, there's a lot into that. But I think those are the two things, we're going to work on those and would come back, I would hope in the next three weeks, maybe with the final estimate of probable cost, I think our consultants call it. And then we would get your permission to go bid it. I think the alternate redesign, the redesign can pick up a lot of the elements of the original design. It's just, you know, it's not going to be as grand, maybe. I don't know if that's the correct word, but we're working off a budget of $700,000. The other thing that, at least for my, my own thinking on this is I think at some point, we got to double check back with the donors to get their input because they're, you know, committed. In a $700,000 project, they've committed 230,000, so, you know, quite a significant amount. So, I'd like to see what their thoughts are on the, on those two alternatives. But we're, we're proceeding on refining the project. Might have questions of me or the other staff involved? I don't know.
Henry, the budget is $700,000. What, what is the estimate of how far we're over budget on it?
Well, there was things we could do like move the building to the west that would have saved tens of thousands of dollars and, you know, eliminating the patios, but we're probably 300,000 off. Yeah. And I think some of it, the consultants always want the project to go the other way. They, they get real conservative because they would much rather the bids come in under estimates than over estimate. And I think the roof system, again, I'm just responding to what Carter said, was just, there's a big swing in price. So, we hope we can, you know, keep the metal roof and have a nice bathroom facility to replace the existing one that's there. And actually, eliminating the existing bathrooms will even improve the view even more. So, you're not in this nice shelter overlooking a 30-plus-year-old building, you know, bathroom building.
So, the phase one, the idea is that what was asked to be done in phase one, the idea is to get as much of that done through that process. And by doing, by, the biggest cost is the structure itself. So, I mean, that's where you're going to see the biggest reduction to meet the budgeted amount. So, the one thing that this does is it does put the timeline back as much as 45 days or so.
Probably 30 or 40.
So, the timeline that you've seen, you could add 30 to 45 days to that. But again, council obviously will be voting on this in the future, so it might not be, instead of in September, I think it was, it will be in October maybe, before we actually vote on this. So, you'll see a different, a little bit different than what you saw at the, at the previous meeting. Anybody else? Any questions? Discussion on that? Okay. We have an item that we need to go into closed session with, so we need a motion to convene into closed session.
I would make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, par. 1, par. 1, as it relates to deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property for a proposed public works facility. Any discussion? Department adds, you do not have to stay, but there isn't any reason why, if you'd like to stay, you certainly could. I mean, except for John, of course. Would need to stay. That's totally up to you. Okay. Otherwise, we would ask that everybody else leave the room. Communications recommendations of the mayor. It was mentioned a little bit earlier about the budget model. We did meet last Thursday morning. There were a couple of council members and myself and some staff that met with our financial advisor, Brad Vergut. And the discussion did talk about capital and how that fit into our, our full budget model and how that will affect our mill rate. We are going to discuss that at our July 16th meeting, which leads into the public works facility, but it also leads into our budget at that time too. So, we'll look to get more information from that at that time. Anything else for the good? Henry, you were going to talk about the budget calendar?
Yes, you know, on your desk is the proposed calendar. It's, it's very similar to last year's. Just a reminder, we do have to sit down with the police and look at their contract. The last, I think, three years, we've actually done one-year deals. But anyways, we have to sit down and get going on that. So, I thought we'd just take advantage of that council meeting on the 20th. The caucus following it to talk about it. Mayor, I don't know, we'll probably seek some volunteers to serve on that negotiating committee?
Sure. Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Usual suspects who want to do it. I will tell you, the union has some new leadership in the union, so they'll be their first time through the process. Then, I'm not going to read every one of these, but then, you know, the next activity, I think Gene and I would like to talk to you just in broad terms about the state budget, you know? We haven't gotten a total review yet because it's only two days old. And so, kind of understand that, you know, there's changes in healthcare that we need to talk to you about and how that might affect the budget. Then, the other change comes down on October 1. For some years, we just had the outside agency send the request to me just for time savings. But I think in my mind, with the new ambulance service, it seems to me that they need to come. You get to, need to meet them and understand their operations and stuff. So, I thought, why not just, you know, bring them all forward? So, that would be on a, again, assuming we go to the two meetings a month. We, all of this is centered around those two, the first and third Tuesdays. I think that, that's probably the highlights of it. I think it will be a challenging budget.
The schedule looks good though.
Always is.
Mayor, is there anything you-
No.
Say about it?
I don't think so. That's work in progress. Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Anybody? If not, we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled council meeting, which is on Tuesday, July 16th, 2013 at 6:30 PM, 6:30 PM. Subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:06. Yeah.